This is the way this went about no- nobody being there. Brian Donovan and I both went and talked to Michael. Michael said, I got an appointment on Monday. Brian says, we did it. I get it. He says, all's I need is somebody there to shut the water off. My company will take care of it a hundred percent for what needs to be done. Therefore, he said, I will be back around on Monday afternoon. We didn't know that the second employee was calling out on Monday until we was down there waiting to do the job on Monday morning. Brian Newman showed up with more than willing to shut the water off and do whatever and be an assistant to whatever Brian needed to have done down there. Dallas said, no, the dig is off until tomorrow. That's how it, that, and that's how it went from Monday to Tuesday.
So you were fully informed that the date was Tuesday and you would have had somebody there, so don't say you wasn't there.
Brian Newman, not Brian Newman, because they were digging. Brian Newman.
When they closed one company, it was when the air, water was flowing in the air, Carol.
You were in, you were, you should have had somebody there, that's your language and it's not ours.
You guys had no business down there digging our water line, okay?
Oh, so you admit it was a water line.
You guys broke our water line.
Well.
Exactly what I'm saying. And you had no business down there doing it.
Well, there's a picture of what happened and there's no corporation here.
This is why I can't make the quoddy times.
And I have a statement from the, um, the contractor that said that exactly what happened. And since you weren't there, you know, so you.
Why would you, how would you know they broke it? If you want to get paid.
Maybe, maybe you should have had the water, somebody from the water department there and then you would have had a better idea.
We get you if the water was flowing in the air, you guys blew a lot of power.
Well, that's, that was after the fact, so he said, good afternoon, Carol. Donovan Construction came to Lubec on eleven six twenty, twenty-three, oh, eleven six twenty-three to fix a water main leak at the Washington and Pleasant Street intersection. We dug down to the water main and when shoveling around the water main, the shovel went through a bad spot in the water main. That is also where the leak in the water main was located. We asked the Lubec Water Department to shut their valves off, but the valves wouldn't work, so we ended up fixing the water main leak with the water line. Please let me know if you have any other questions.
This is why we're upgrading our system is because we cannot shut that down a hundred and ten percent.
Well, all I know is.
And if we did shut it down, you cannot fix a water leak with eight pound freshener.
Apparently they.
And the way that was blowing in the air, you can see from your pictures. If that would've been blowing in the air for five years.
Well, I think it just gave way, the rotten part of the pipe gave way.
It, it, when you took his bucket and cut it off.
I'm pretty sure that I, I'm, I'm under the impression that a water pipe would not cave in on the force of a sh- a shovel. So.
That's right, so he broke it when he took his bucket down there and he broke it off.
Well, I guess there's no eyewitness to that and I'm taking his testimony as a record.
Have you ever had a water leak in your house? Does it ever stop and heal?
Why don't we, why don't we discuss what you're offering? So the water department wants us to accept the remainder of the half of the bill of which the, the town was kind enough to offer to pay. The three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents, but you want us to wait a year and a half to get the payment.
And if it comes back, you guys reimburse us all of it.
Unacceptable.
Continue reading it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep.
In the event that the water sewer does reappear, would, we, the trustees of the water district would expect the reimbursement of the three thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, the in-kind amount previously paid toward Donovan's bill. So you're not going to pay the two thousand two hundred and fifty-two, because we have received three thousand of the ten thousand seven hundred dollar bill. We've received approximately thirty-one hundred from the water department. They're offering to give us another twenty-two fifty, if we would take a few dollars, in the, in August of twenty twenty-five. I don't believe, in my personal opinion, that that's acceptable. Too long a time. Any other leak could have shown up by then. So I'm, I'm going to open it up. Um, anybody else have anything to say before we vote on whether we accept the proposal?
My only thought is, um, it doesn't rectify the admission problem of this year's budget. We are presently taking seven thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents out of road repair, um, for a water problem. We don't have enough money in roads as it is, but like I don't, and I, you know, I asked you, is that there really is any place outside identified that the money can come out of? So, um, I don't see how this author helps with this problem.
The first thing is, is that she keeps saying that it's a water repair and it's not. That has not been identified as a waterfall, so reinstating it could be a sewer issue, not a waterfall.
I believe they fixed the water line, though.
It's not leaking anymore, so.
They fixed the water line, though, they, they put like pieces in the water line.
After they broke it, they put main in it, yes.
My point being, you know, it's a water line.
It's fixed.
Um, so. There's no leak now, from what I gather.
Is that sewer line underneath that water line, Dallas?
I'm not sure where.
I don't think it's anywhere near it. They're not that close together.
Is there a chance that what you were smelling as sewerage was what the post office needed to repair that whole time and there were two separate things?
This is a year ago, yes.
No. No, they have the room separate. Precision.
They're hooked up to our separate now.
They're here.
Now, but that was seven or eight months ago, that may be where the residual issues were, was when you were cleaning it.
That's what I'm wondering if this is.
The, theirs was leaking.
There was no smell at all when they dug that. You can say he broke it or you can say whatever you want, but there was no sewer smell in, in the hole.
So we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so we're going to vote?
And discussion. Reach a.
No, I, I think, I think we'll accept it, but I think we need to keep track of what's going on.
Well, no, and we've, we've talked about getting everybody in the same room and, and making a contingency here where folks are all on the same page moving forward. We can't spend all this time and go through all this and repeat this again. I'll quit. I'm not doing this again.
Would you repeat the motion, please?
We made the motion in the second.
I, yeah, would you repeat what the motion is?
To accept the proposal.
We're going to give you a copy of the.
We have a proposal here, we're looking, we'll just accept the proposal.
Now, here's.
So I want to finish it.
But I do want to tell you, John, this is going to make for very interesting reading.
Here's what I'd like.
In a quoddy time.
Here's what I'd like to see, myself. I'd like to see Dicky and Michael sit down, come up with a written plan, submit it to the water trustees, submit it to the select board. The select board sits down with the water trustees and we have a whole checklist, we go through and forth.
Well, then the motion has to be contingent on that.
Right, but let, let Michael and Dicky write it up, see if they approve and we approve, we sit down together and just.
I don't have any problem with what, what, how Michael does his thing.
That's not that, we want it standardized.
We want it right.
You know, I get that, but I mean, there's no, there's been no issues there as far as I know, because I, I mean, as far as I know, Public Works and the water company, the water have got, worked together fine anyway.
How do we avoid this in the future, then?
Well, I don't know, because to me, to me, it's, it's two board issues, because the employees of the town and the employees of the water company work fine together.
So they, they, they weren't able to come that day to take.
But here's the point, but here's the thing, it's like this mess that's been going on right down there. I don't have any problem with awarding that letter either, other than the year and a half, whatever it is. Because my opinion of it is, is they pay, they, they buck up, they pay you the bill right now. If we're wrong, we'll give them their money back, but if we're not, it's water under the bridge.
Yeah, they pay the bill amount, yes.
We're done, we're done, we're done dealing with it and let's move on.
Thank you.
When another, when another issue makes down there, we'll find out whose issue it is and we will address it. But this rehashing, day in and day out, every day of the week.
Well, and just so you know, Dallas and I have talked about this and this is what his board came back with. Dallas is just here as a representative. We, we, he and I proposed just that scenario and this is what his board came back with.
Well, I can't make a decision other than what's on that paper.
Well, I, oh, okay, so are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
So. All on paper? Okay, so the one. All those opposed?
Just one on, just, um, giving it forward.
Please, would you clarify, what you just wrote it on, was it, do you accept this?
Yes.
Okay.
Michael.
But no stipulations and anything you ask for, that's not part of it, because you didn't put it in writing, so. Working together is not part of your agreement that you just agreed to. Do I?
Michael had a question.
No, I, no, it was answered.
Okay. Well, let me, let me ask Alice, will you, will you go to, back to the board and have Michael sit down with Dicky so they can come up with a written plan and submit it to, to the select board and to your board?
A chain of command should be formed.
Right, and we can both sit together, both boards can sit together and say, okay, this is the way everything's going to go.
I'm fine with that.
From now on.
I'm fine with that.
So you'll come back to us with, with an approval on that, just even an email or something?
And I believe that they need to come to us and ask for their stipend, approval from the municipal law.
That's, that's a whole other.
Well, you know what, that, when she can take that, I will give you the law. Can you give them a copy of the law?
Yeah, and I, and I'm not real worried about that because, you know, it was twenty twenty-one. My point was just being, there was them and us.
Yeah, and they're still loose.
And, 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 you know, the state laws kind of make it obvious that it's not supposed to be that way.
That's right.
It's supposed to be like us, making it the best for like the ratepayers and the taxpayers and we're just not doing that.
Yeah, they don't get off of each other.
That's why, when I saw the collaborate, you know, the mandated consolidation, like.
No collaboration at all going on.
And you're going to do that because the water company is a private utility. It's like the water department, they're a business.
Regulated by the public utilities.
But they're semi-quasit, they, they fall under these state laws. They fall under these state statutes.
They fall under state statutes.
They actually qualify as a me, a, a medium size when you look at the, uh, the state statute around accounting for water districts and utilities.
And they can, they, 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 they have a privilege, privilege to do that under the rules of the PCU.
Well, and my, and my, and my point was only that, you know, um, I don't know what, what's the benefit to the ratepayers or the taxpayers.
We are governed by.
What'd you say, Dallas?
We are governed by the PUC.
Yes, 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 and that's, that's who recommended that I look at these laws.
And. That's who recommended, if you're going to get a raise in your, up your rate hikes or nothing, that everything is through them, it's, it doesn't have to go through the board.
Well, no, that's not true, but we give you the rules.
Right.
What has to go through the board is if we up your, uh, height or something.
What's asked of the board is, is the trustees of the water receive compensation as recommended by the trustees and must go in front of the officers of the municipality.
And will I know?
Uh, we'll give you a copy, because maybe you didn't know. And we would like to have an annual report that we can put in our, we'll.
That, that was my, my, that's, that's in the state statute that, and we don't get that, like, you know, and it also is supposed to include a treasurer's report, which is more than what the PUC website has, because I went and visited, that is only identifies, um, revenue and assets and it doesn't really break it down too much. So, you know, there's a whole nother chapter on, you know, the accounting stuff that's supposed to happen and there is an expectation of accountability to the people and the town officials.
That would be a start.
And that's, you know, that's a sad point, you know?
We have an audit in the media.
Well, yeah, I know that, but that's, it's more than that that's supposed to happen. We all, you know, that's mandated, that you have to audit, that's a whole nother chapter.
Dallas, the last audit that's at the PCU that people can look at is twenty nineteen, yeah. That's the last one that's been given to the PUC.
But I'm sure that's not, I'm sure that's not your fault, because if you go to the, if you go to the Lubec.
You can down here, a lot of districts, we got.
Link, intention of Lisbon, you know?
The only audit that's not complete on ours is, uh, one of the districts.
So maybe we can just highlight kind of what things we need to report.
I think a quarter, a quarterly meeting would be really great.
Yeah.
Like once every three months or maybe twice a year.
We can spell it out.
I don't think these are hard asks.
Maybe you guys could write something up for me to take to my board.
Sure.
Yeah, no, and, and.
Yeah, definitely.
Just so we can work it out.
Then we could write, then we could recommend some other stuff and maybe we can get together and.
That would be really good.
And finalize it, so we can get working forward.
I know the boys all work good together. It's, it's us that have to have the, the.
Collaboration, yeah.
The, you know what I mean?
I, I'm.
Couple of.
If you guys were, see a paper and state what?
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll bring it over, because we'll have to tie it up.
And I put the, that you'd like to have the annual report in it.
Yep.
And I'm not opposed to it.
And we'll also, we'll submit the minutes that says that, uh, the, the proposal was approved.
We, we want to have.
Give you that as well.
Yeah, we want to have your guy get with our guy.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'd like to have the board of selectmen sign a paper to what we're just moving on.
Well, it's in the minutes, too.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes, public right here.
It is, but who knows down the road? I mean, I've got a paper that I'd like to have.
It, uh, yes, you can bring that, it's fine.
And I'd like to have you guys sign it, that way.
Yes.
Next year, you guys may not be here.
Look at this guy, two days out of surgery.
Yeah, I know, he's a trooper. Okay, so, um, I'm not signing it, because I've.
Read out loud.
Sorry. But it's, it passed.
Yes.
So you're, that's all it matters, passed the years. I just think it was too long a time. It would have been better if it was this August, but it is what it is and you couldn't change it anyway, because you're just a representative.
We're moving forward and that's what we need to do.
Yeah, let's just move forward.
Yep, that's right. It's a small town, we all got to work.
Nancy, Nancy, you didn't vote for that?
Yeah, I'll still sign, because even though my, can you?
No, you can't sign it if you didn't agree to it.
Absolutely can.
No, you can't.
Think about it.
It's a.
Let's not have another fight, Coach. Let's not have another fight.
I absolutely could, but I won't.
No, not if you know the doubt.
Actually, best form would be that you all sign it, that's the best form, yeah. Yeah, well, I'll find you.
All of our board will.
Yeah.
I've already been in touch with all of our board and, um, our whole board will sign.
And I would have had to sign it, Alice, I just let you know my board objected, you know?
Thanks for your efforts, Dallas.
Thank you, guys.
Keep the same. You probably want a copy of that.
Dallas?
Get it back to this board.
Can I, can I put a copy of it?
Copy, copy.
Hey, what do we get next? Holy God.
He's not talking.
Well, you know what, you haven't, we didn't go to the last meeting, you didn't, but like you replied to and everything else, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, we're just going to get along now.
Yeah, I still think we should look at the validation.
Yeah, you might be doing this whole board, but that, you know.
Tax for closure, huh? Here it is. No, it's just, you know, you waffle, you add, adamant on something else and then you change your mind. So I'll remember that when you want to get something passed. Okay, tax for closures. Do we have tax for closures?
We have, they're coming out on April.
Thank you.
Okay, bye, Dallas, thank you.
April.
Oh, no, huh. Sixteenth. So anybody who's recently received a certified letter, don't ignore it, pick up something or call the town office. What? That says, anybody who's received a certified letter recently, either pick it up or call the town office.
How many certified letters were sent?
I'm not sure how many, really.
So what are you saying, they were good at that?
It'll be foreclosed.
Well, this was for taxes?
Yes, it'll be foreclosed April sixteenth, four P M, it's not.
So you're saying, don't ignore your certified letter that's been sent to you, pick it up or call the.
So was it a handful or was it dozen?
There's quite a few, um, I can look at her list if you'd like.
Oh, just try it.
Can you put it on the quoddy, so people can see?
At least, at least one.
There's usually a lot at first and then it will down and it's a few, a couple, because people sometimes don't know. This is standard.
Is that, yeah.
Is that standard number for the initial, really?
Yeah, okay. This is standard for years.
There's usually one or two that wait, wait till like almost the day.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right.
And it's usually, it's, it's not like you usually like large amount of accounts, it's usually smaller, like a point of papers.
So let's see, you want to appoint Candy Finney to the, uh, celebration committee?
I'll make that a motion.
All on paper?
It's the I G A, I think, there.
I wonder, Dicky.
I'm not just joking.
Public hearing for budget prioritizing.
Our last meeting, you guys wanted to have a, a talk about, um, when you like to, uh, yeah, blabber, um, have like a public hearing and what do people think should be first prioritized for the budget? Because we know we've got increases that we can't prevent and there was talk of dangerous buildings and how much money we want to throw away.
Right.
That's the start of that conversation.
That's what started the conversation.
Uh, you know, like, should we put sixty thousand in there, being realistic that we might have to take down five houses or like are people going to say no to that to begin with?
You can put something like that down, but they can go make it over.
I know, yeah. But I don't think you should talk before, like, you know.
Couple more storms like this year.
They don't have to worry about taking those buildings down.
That's true, they'll be down on their own.
Yeah.
I don't know what to tell you about that, I don't know.
I don't know if you guys want it in or if you just want to go with the budget.
I don't see why they can't come to a select board meeting and, and why it has to be separate. Why can't we have the, um, public hearing about budget prioritizing before our, our, our next meeting when it's on, at six? So it turns to six, not next, not April tenth, but April. So that meeting, we could just.
I think that's when you guys mentioned it, too.
We did mention it, but we did mention it for then.
So why don't we just have it then and that way they can come and tell what's going on.
Five o'clock on the sixth.
And it could be, it could be five thirty, it could be a half hour.
Okay, five thirty on the budget.
Five thirty on the, no, it's, it's still the five o'clock for the tenth.
Are you still on?
It's the next one that goes back to six.
Right, what's the date?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Four twenty-four at five thirty, we're going to do that.
And we'll have a little pu, a little public hearing on budget.
Okay.
That'll be good, before we go into budgeting. Broadband Zoom meeting was dissoluted, I went to the town that day, but can you go and tell me what happened?
No, we're looking at April second, um, around six o'clock.
I thought it was the third.
I thought it was the third.
Oh, sorry, the third, the third, sorry, I looked at the wrong calendar. Um, Simon Thorn is, he was at the last meeting and he didn't have any handouts and people had questions and he was just going to have.
The consolidated communication.
He just wanted to talk about the V funds and, you know, setting up broadband and.
He's doing, is he doing a Zoom meeting?
It's just going to be a Zoom.
Zoom?
He's not going to be here.
Okay.
And we don't need to be here, we can watch a Zoom.
So you can do it at home from your house.
Yeah, that's what my plan is, is to Zoom.
Did you play with Mark or like hill or him at your hill organization?
I'm gonna, I'm going to see if he can, if he can't.
Okay.
Whatever it is, we'll, we'll be posted on the town website.
Okay.
The link, I mean, on the website, on the calendar.
Where's the license?
Right here.
It's stapled in the back. You didn't have, you didn't have to be here?
He was, why is he supposed to be here? They tell him, it's a wine, um, it's a, it's stapled in the back of your.
And what's, what's the quick clean deeds?
These are from a foreclosure, um, that, select board turned that to the owner, um, and there was like three or four dollars left on the property and he finally paid. So I can fin, we can finally release it.
For, um, burn?
Yes.
How many of them?
Three.
They gave them all, they paid all the taxes?
He paid a large amount at that meeting.
Yes.
But he was interested shortly, sort of the interest, um, and of course, and technically until it's.
Who's going to witness this?
I think, they all have to sign it.
You have to sign it.
Nope, I'm not a select board member.
Okay.
Oh, I have to notarize it, though, I can't notarize it.
Witness and notarize.
For the whole.
Dicky, can you be a witness to these quick clean deeds? You have to witness all the signatures and then she's going to notarize it. We have to sign real, real estate quick clean deed.
Okay.
You'll be, can you be the witness?
Who will?
There's three of them, so you're going to have to sign, Dicky, and I'll. Okay, I make a motion.
He changes mind.
I make a motion, we signed the quick clean deeds for McKinney Properties because his payments go.
I was thinking that.
All on paper? So just make sure you sign exactly, like, originally, um, it's a J, you have to put, you can't, you have to put it exactly the way your name is typed.
On your own name.
On your own name, we haven't had that screw up before. That's funny. All right, here we go, one, try to be nice, this gets recorded with a deed of record. How did you know all of us were going to be there? So in this thing that you put on this, and how did you even know that everybody was going to be there?
I don't.
So I was, I've never seen that on there before.
Always, every, every one of them there.
And so you just scratched out the person that didn't sign it?
No, we leave it and they go by the name of the signature.
No, it changed your name.
No, I'm just saying.
And I said, just saying, I'll.
There's, like, it's only three of us, let's say there's only three of us, yeah, we can't say this for those five of them.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure we talked.
Well, then, we're all here, we're all here, so.
I'll have to fill that one.
Dicky, hey, put out, take a chair.
Yeah, you have to sign on five.
And while you're signing, you can tell us what you wanted to tell us about the road.
All right, well, that's what I've been waiting for.
Well, thank you. It's not bad, it's only five, it's only five.
Oh, hold on. It's only five times three times.
Four, three times?
No, yeah, but you have to sign your name five times on paper, because you're witnessing all our signatures, so like, you know, you're witnessing that we all signed our names.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought it just one.
No, not everybody did.
Three times, yeah, three times five, different. We could have other people witness. I just texted.
Oh, you did too?
I did.
Okay, where is it again?
Right here. You sent him like a wine in Cambodian U.S.A.
A lot?
The wine, you sent the wine and you sent.
No, the wine I got, the other I didn't.
Cambodian, I think you said Cambodian U.S.A.
Well, you know, if he wants it, he should be there. And we also offered to do multiple ones of these for the summer and he said he wanted to do one at a time. I didn't know they were asking.
Where we had to have a road dog, come on with that. Please, Dicky, you're standing there so long. Nothing, I'm square one.
It's going to be my family. I agree, but I just wish it was sooner because it's going to screw up fiscal year, along, you know, that I hope.
I wanted it sooner.
But you voted for it.
And when it was all the more I wanted it sooner.
Yeah, we all started it.
I didn't start it.
When we won this, it was bigger.
We did deliberation, um, yeah. And one, I still think it was more deliberation, but it just needs to go away. Have their, I think we'll talk about it soon.
Wow, that's pretty good. We did them all, wow. It's a great signature.
Okay, so do I get to go now?
No.
Nope.
Turn.
Motion to adjourn?
We got to go, since you.
Well, I'm.
We brought the wine.
Are you going to say Cambodian?
Yes.
I can't, yeah. We get rid of these.
I've seen you.
The apparently.[1578.51]
They apparently. Did you say he was coming up?
All of the garden.
Usually after it's cool is one.
What did he want it?
I'm going to say.
As you guys, as you know, like, for the public, the, uh, the winter that we didn't have is actually causing havoc on, on our wo, roads because of an early spring. Water, water is a major, major issue. The outlying areas are, are not being neglected, but they are so bad, so wet and soft that, you know, unless it's an emergency and we need emergency actions to take place out there, they're not going to see us on, on any of those with any equipment until, uh, it can be taken care of and somewhat properly. I mean, if we, if we take a truck out there, we take a piece of equipment out there, you're talking a quarter of a million dollars if something happens to a piece of this equipment and we, and we do something that we shouldn't be doing on one of these dirt roads or one of these places that, you know, I hate to put it, is in one or two places, whether they're seasonals or one or two homes that's out on the end of a long dirt road or the path. You know, it's, it's unfortunate, but, but the roads are in so bad a shape and they've had, and the maintenance on them, we haven't been able to take care of them quite some time and it's, it's just to the point that we're at a level right now where it's actually dying. Even the hot top roads, they're, they're submerged more than they're, they're not lately and the water is going down through them and up through them and everywhere. So it's to the point, we're doing the best we can to get water out of the roads, but until we get some runoff somewhere for it to go, so we can actually get some reprieve. It's just, they're in so bad a shape.
Yeah, and you can see it when you drive near it.
Uh, in town, I mean, I, if anybody hasn't noticed, I mean, we went down to, down by the marina and started working on that on, on a Wednesday because I figured it's, you know, it was the middle of the week, there's, there's a couple of days we can dress this up and, and get out of there. But the material, there is so much material laying in the ditches and alongside of the roads and whatnot. You don't know what you got or what you're getting into until you actually start getting a hold and went through it. And I don't know how many roads we pulled out of there.
Oh, where'd you put it? Looks great.
I have no idea, ah, out behind the, I see you. It's, but I mean, it's to the point, what I'm getting at is.
What's it good to have it over there?
It's a lot, taking a long time to, to actually accomplish some of the stuff that we're doing. But it's being done on roads that we can't damage or cause any more damage to than what's already done right now. So it's either sat in the garage like everybody wants us to do or doesn't want us to do or go to work like people want us to do, so.
Oh, Dicky, should that have, should that have a culvert down there at some point in time?
Closer, closer to the commercial pier, yes.
Yeah.
As you drive down over the hill coming towards the marina from the old factory, you'll notice there is one going across.